Good morning.
Recording in progress.
I'm Representative Jerry Palet and I am Chair of the Joint Legislative Audit Review Committee, and I'm calling to order our special meeting today for the purpose of acting on the Executive Committee's recommendation for appointment of a new legislative auditor upon the pending retirement of our extraordinary current legislative auditor, Keenan Kanapaski. We will have a roll call to make sure, you know, on the record who is present, and then we will hear the Executive Committee's recommendation and have any discussion. And I will gladly accept for action a motion to appoint the new auditor based on the recommendation. We will do a voice vote for that. I will ask everyone to say their name and then how they vote, first for ayes, then nays or abstentions. And then I will ask Keenan, assuming the vote is positive, I will ask Keenan to introduce the new, the next legislative auditor and ask them to speak. We may finish a few minutes before 10:00 AM, which case we will take a short hiatus and then open up the regular I-900 Subcommittee Public Hearing at 10:00 AM. Are there any questions on the agenda before I ask for the roll call? Okay. Would staff, please, do a roll call?
You bet. This is a roll call for the attendance at the October 19th, 2022 J-LARC Special Meeting. Representative Berg.
Present.
Representative Fai.
Present.
Representative Frame.
Present.
Representative Gainer.
Present.
Senator Hasagawa.
Here.
Representative Hoff.
Here.
Senator Lovlett. Senator Mullet.
Here.
Representative Orkut.
Here.
Representative Palet.
Here.
Senator Rivers. Senator Saldana. Senator Short.
Here.
Representative Stokesbury.
Here.
Senator Wagoner.
Wagoner is present.
And Senator Wilson.
Here.
All right, we have 13 in attendance, and we do have a quorum.
Thank you all for attending. I was nervous there for a few moments about having a quorum and whether or not we had to quickly call and text people. This is, I think, going to be a, it's a very important meeting and historic. I would like to, at this point in time, share with you that your Executive Committee, Senator Wilson as Vice Chair, Representative Orkut, and Senator Mullet, and I conducted interviews of three recommended finalists for the position of legislative auditor. The recommendations were provided from screening by our Senate Committee Services and Office of Program Research Directors after reviewing the applications. So we had three finalists. We interviewed them. We had extensive discussions with them. And one person stood out far above the others for the important position of legislative auditor for the state of Washington. And that person was Eric Thomas, who is the current deputy legislative auditor. And Eric is someone we know. But we conducted a thorough search. We put out the word across the nation. And we had well-qualified candidates. What we found is that we want someone who not only is extremely well-qualified in the world of legislative auditing and being, understanding both the tax review function and the performance review function and the policy world of auditing, but has thoughts about how to improve the operation and action on our recommendations by the full legislature to make further work of us as a committee. And I think we were all impressed by that. We already know how credible the work of Mr. Thomas is. But we really were excited, I think we're all excited, about the ideas that Eric is proposing to put forward to work with us, both as the Executive Committee and all of you, moving forward, building on an incredible legacy from our current legislative auditor. And one of the most crucial things about leadership is building an incredible staff who you're not afraid to have them take wings and shine. And our current legislative auditor has done that. We've known that. Building the staff and professional development has been a tremendous priority of Keenan's, and it shows in this choice. So I'd like to introduce and the recommendation of the Executive Committee to you that we appoint Eric Thomas as the next legislative auditor upon the retirement of Keenan Kanapaski, which will be January...
Fourth.
Fourth.
Not, not that I'm counting the days.
January 4th, which is the date of our pre-legislative session, J-LARC meeting. I'd like to ask Executive Committee members to share thoughts on their recommendation. Your all and the committee.
Yeah, I'm happy to. It was a thorough interview process. I felt like we, we had help from, you know, Committee Service staff to kind of weed through a lot of the applications and narrow it down to what were the most qualified applicants. And we did do interviews via Zoom in person. And it was unanimous from the Executive Committee that Eric Thomas, I think, would do the best job leading this organization going forward in the future. And he's a, he's a young buck. We could have him for a while. This is good. So I would make a motion, and we can let others speak on the motion, I'm making a motion that Eric Thomas be the next legislative auditor for the state of Washington.
Thank you for the question. And that was a second from Representative Orkut, Representative Orkut. Would you like to speak on your second here?
Yeah, please forgive me. I got sun shining in my window, so I, I don't have shades on them. I really appreciate the, the work that the Executive Committee did and the fact that we put it out to a nationwide search. I think it's critically important that we look to see all the available candidates and not just assume that the best one is, is from within. There can be, you know, tremendous experience and, and insight that can come from an individual that has not been in our organization. But when, when we did the interviews, it's like, you know, Rep. Palet and Senator Mullet have said, you know, we just felt like Eric outshined the others that we interviewed. When, when we asked him questions about the dangers of hiring somebody from within, you know, he didn't hesitate. He already had answers to those concerns, and he actually answered those concerns. It was clear that he wanted to continue to work to improve wherever improvements could be made, continuing the education for, for staff members, obviously for himself, and they're going to look for, you know, look at other auditing entities to see what they're doing. So he clearly had thought about it, was prepared to not only address it in the interview, but to address it ongoing. So with, with his experience, with his knowledge and familiarity with the J-LARC process that, that we go through, it is different audits than what you might get in the corporate world. But I, I think with his experience, with his willingness to look outside of J-LARC, look to see what our best practices as things evolve, as improvements are made, he's prepared to, to make those changes at J-LARC. It's not like there's going to be some big sweeping change that's going to change the entire direction, but it's going to keep us caught up and, and modern in the way that we do things. So it, it very clear, it was very clear to us that he had thought about a lot of these things and what his vision was for the way the job should be done. I think he agrees that Keenan's been doing an excellent job, and he wants to continue that on, but he doesn't want, he doesn't want it to stagnate. And that's a, it's a very real danger when somebody from inside takes over. But he made it very clear that that wasn't something he was going to allow to happen, that he was going to continue to, to move J-LARC forward as there are opportunities to do so. And, you know, he just, he did a great job answering all of the questions that we had. And it wasn't like he had to sit there and think about it and, and wonder what he should do. He knew. And he just really stood out above everybody else.
Thank you for those words, Representative Orkut. Vice Chair Wilson, would you like to add thoughts?
Sure, I can add more, but much of has already been said. I was very impressed with Eric's, I was going to say testimony, his, his interview. And I think he was very well-prepared. He knows his job well. He knows what he has to do in the future. He also knows what shoes he has to fill. I think he was far and away the best candidate that we interviewed, I think. And had, there is a lot of good reasons to, to hire with, from within because of his vast knowledge of everything that he is tasked with for J-LARC. So I think that I have absolutely no reservations with voting to put Eric in this position.
Thank you for those thoughts from the Executive Committee members. Like to open it for discussion from any of the regular members of the committee. Does anyone have any thoughts or questions as part of the discussion? Not seeing any. There is one other thing I forgot to say here very quickly, which is that the, this committee at the bequest of the, request of the Legislature, direction of the Legislature following legislation from Senator Hasagawa, is embarking on a nation-leading effort to identify when and incorporate into our audits and recommendations and both for performance and tax preferences, racial disparity analyses. And it's nation-leading work, and that was one of the important considerations that we had in terms of understanding the nation-leading role, the importance of having a highly documented, credible process for making determinations of when you proceed with that analysis and how it is conducted. And I think it will inform legislative action for decades to come. And that was an important aspect of our criteria. So with that, we have a, Senator Hasagawa, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate your mentioning that, and I was particularly impressed with Mr. Thomas's resume actually identifying that as an issue he looks forward to working on and actually having a diversity, equity, and inclusion certificate from Cornell University to help guide his work on that. So I look forward to working with him in the future on this. Thank you.
Appreciate your noting those qualifications. With that, I will, we will now proceed to a voice vote. And the motion is to appoint Eric Thomas as the new legislative auditor upon the retirement of Keenan Kanapaski in January 2023, per the recommendation of the Executive Committee. All in favor, please say your name, and then aye. Palet votes aye.
Representative Frame votes aye.
Senator Short votes aye.
All in both aye.
Wagoner votes aye.
Anyone opposed, please say your name and nay. Not hearing anyone opposed. Is there anyone who would like to abstain from voting? Anyone wish to abstain? For the record, the vote of the Executive Committee to appoint Eric Thomas as our next legislative auditor is unanimous. And thank you for that vote. Keenan, would you introduce our incoming legislative auditor?
Yes, I'd very, be very pleased and honored to do that. Thank you, Representative Palet, and, and I would like to congratulate the committee on what I think is a very wise choice for your next leader. Yeah, Eric originally started working for J-LARC about 20 years ago, actually. And he, he had worked for a few years after he had been shortly out of grad school and was, had been working at NASA for, for a while. He's not a rocket scientist, but he did have a little background there. And then he took a hiatus to go try some other opportunities outside of J-LARC. And after a few years, I think he discovered the error of his ways, and I was fortunate enough to, to convince him to come back and join the, the, the J-LARC office here. Because I do think he, he really has realized from those experiences what an amazing committee this is to work for and what a really truly exceptional group of individuals we have on the staff to help you with all these challenges. You, you always, we get very, very complicated, challenging questions thrown our way from all of you when we do performance audits. And, you know, that usually means that you don't send them our way if it's easy to answer, right? So, and that usually means it's, there's not a real kind of discernible roadmap to how to figure out how to answer these things. And so one of the things I think people may not realize until they do this work is how much creativity is really required to do this work well with those difficult questions you throw our way. And not only does Eric have an, an amazing resume and background and experience with auditing and evaluation and his knowledge of Washington State government, but he's really innovative, and he's been a fundamental team member on helping us really kind of try to find that objective balance, but creative pathway to answer these challenging questions. So I'm, I'm really quite certain that you will be exceptionally pleased to have him leading this effort, and we'll get tremendous results that will continue to be only, only better for helping the Legislature figure out how to solve our state's challenging issues. And so I would love to ask the Chair if he wants Mr. Thomas to make any comments.
Eric, you should unmute yourself as the incoming legislative auditor. And congratulations on your appointment.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, Eric Thomas, J-LARC staff. First off, I very much appreciate the kind words from the Executive Committee and the endorsement, and also the full committee for placing your trust in me to lead J-LARC. Keenan will definitely be a tough actor to follow. I think, as you know, he's done quite a bit to raise J-LARC's profile nationally and also raise the bar for the quality of the reports that we provide you. I also just want to briefly acknowledge what a great mentor and leader he has been, both to me personally, and I think I could say pretty confidently for all of us in the office, so we will miss him very much. That said, I really do appreciate the opportunity to assist the committee in its oversight role in efforts to improve the efficiency and effectiveness of state government programs. We have a great team in place, and have you say that Valerie Whitner is going to continue on as the Deputy Legislative Auditor, so we will have some continuity, and we'll work to make this transition as seamless as possible. But thank you again. I very much appreciate it. Look forward to working with you all.
Thank you very much, and welcome to Eric. Please join me in virtually or literally applauding this appointment. And I want to thank and recognize Valerie as well for her in great commitment to the Office of Legislative Auditor and years of experience and the continuity of the team in terms of its management and the experience is greatly appreciated, and we really, I think it's extraordinary to have such leadership at the top. And I believe, again, that reflects the work and values of Keenan. So we are, at this point in time, seven minutes away from the convening of the regular meeting at 10:00 AM. So is there any discussion on the record? Otherwise, we will take a, we'll adjourn temporarily and reconvene promptly at 10:00 AM. So, any discussion? Okay, so refill your coffee or take a momentary break, and please be on in six minutes. Thank you, everyone. In January, and today, we will be having a, two topics on today's agenda for the committee meeting. The first topic is a presentation requested by me from the state auditor on audits of charter schools following their, which will be followed by their recent report on the prescription monitoring program. People who are on as panelists and members, please mute your phones and computers until you're called on. We will conduct a roll call again, and I remind you that we're conducting this over Zoom video conference technology, and the meeting is being livestreamed over TVW, and of course, as TVW always does as the conduit for openness and transparency for state government, you'll be able to view this in their archives. The staff from the state auditor's office will make their presentation, during which time you can, members can let me know if you're going to have a question using the raise hand feature at the end of the presentation. And agency staff have been asked to provide comments on the audit report, and members will have the opportunity to ask the agency staff questions as well. Then after the presentation on the prescription monitoring program, we have invited testimony. There are two entities or persons who supplied testimony, written testimony in advance, which was distributed to you via email. And if anyone wishes to provide written testimony on this topic, it should be sent to J-L-A-R-C, J-L-A-R-C at leg.wa.gov, and see the Joint Legislative Audit Review Committee website for more information. But also say that, I'm pleased to say that staff has put the homepage for J-LARC under Agency Committee of Legislature, so it's easier to find. And written testimony will be redistributed to the full committee. So would staff, please, conduct a roll? Vice Chair Wilson? You're muted.
Sure, yes. I'll, I'll wait until after the roll call. Thank you.
All right, let's, for the record, please go through the roll, roll call again.
This is a roll call for attendance at the October 19th, 2022 I-900 hearing. Representative Berg. Representative Fai. Representative Frame. Representative Gainer.
Here.
Senator Hasagawa.
Here.
Representative Hoff.
Here.
Senator Lovlett. Senator Mullet. Representative Orkut.
Here.
Representative Palet.
Here.
Senator Rivers.
Present.
Senator Saldana. Senator Short.
Here.
Representative Stokesbury.
Present.
Senator Wagoner. Senator Wilson.
Here.
We have nine in attendance.
Thank you. Senator Wilson, you had a question or comment?
Yes, I actually would like to say something about this agenda today. I, and, and this won't be a surprise to Chair Palet, because we did have a conversation about this yesterday. But we always strive to be a bipartisan committee, and in that vein, we work to build trust for good bipartisan results in this audit committee. And specifically today, we're hearing an item that is not a performance audit, but an accountability audit. Accountability audits are not statutorily required to be heard in this committee. They don't, they don't come under the purview of the I-900 requirements. So this is not an appropriate jurisdiction for this item. To that end, I think that the J-LARC Board was also never consulted about adding this item to the agenda. As well, I understand that those associated with this agenda item weren't even notified until very late last week. So they weren't even given a full four, four days business notice to prepare for this. So, and I, I do believe, and I hate to say, but this is getting very close to a very politically motivated choice to have put this agenda item on here. So I'm really disappointed in the direction that this agenda and the process took today, and I hope that this doesn't become a standard practice. And if I actually had my preferences today, I would vote to remove this agenda item and find out, put it, turn off, sorry. And if we find that later this, the agenda item needs to be heard, then we can find the appropriate forum with appropriate notice given at, at that time to achieve that goal. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Senator, and I know that several other people are putting up their hands. We will entertain comments and questions at the end of the presentation, which may answer your questions.
Chair Palet, I apologize for Palet, but I'd like to move to remove this agenda item.
Please mute yourself. You're out of order. And we now...
Did you hear my motion, Mr. Chair?
No, we will not hear your motion. It is out of order.
Can we get a ruling on that?
Do not have an action item on the agenda. We're, it is out of order. And what is in order right now is for the presentation to proceed.
And I've moved that we remove this presentation from the agenda.
I was even knowing that Senator Wilson, as vice chair, would be voicing some concern about this because she spoke to me yesterday. I chose to allow comments before the presentation. I think that some of those issues will be self-parented answered. If the chair is allowed to explain what the sequence of events here and why I've asked for this presentation. And then we will be able to take questions on the presentation. I requested a performance audit of charter school systems after reporting by K U O W. Uncovered very serious concerns regarding certain charter schools and English language learners and special education students. Those concerns, which I asked to have a performance audit conducted in regard to raised issues about compliance with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act. Including whether or not the schools were providing English language learning and special education services to students. And whether or not, as reported by teachers themselves, that lack of English language learning was violating both IDEA, Special Education Provisions, state rules and laws and Title VI of the Civil Rights Act. And secondly, K U O W documented that students were who are not performing on reading tests, were being requested or urged to leave the charter of public schools in, run by the impact organization. And in that vein, I asked for a performance audit that looked explicitly at the enrollment levels of special education students as well as whether or not the schools were preparing to and meeting the requirements of state law that I was deeply involved in. Passage of which is to assess every kindergartner to second grader for disabilities, including dyslexia relating to their ability to read and providing those students with what we call multi-tiered system of supports and increasing level of support as they go through kindergarten to second grade to make sure that all second graders are able to read. The reporting indicated that while Seattle Public Schools have nearly 14% of students enrolled with IEPs, Individual Education Plans, identified as having disabilities, the schools were identified as having enrollments of about 10% less, or at least one was. These are all performance audit subjects. I requested that the auditor perform a performance audit and report back to us. And that's a normal practice. Many of you probably have requested performance audits. I certainly have worked with the auditor's office on requests for other performance audits. In particular, I've done a request and had them do an extensive performance audit regarding special education services in the state in the past, which led to significant reforms, including the, some of which were reflected in legislation I just discussed. So the auditor's office informed me that they had done what they called an arc of audits that were the equivalent of performance audit and asked that they present those audits and then for this committee and others to determine whether or not a further performance audit was desired. And so I put this on the agenda as a matter of rather than having a performance audit because the state auditor's office felt that presenting their work to date may replace the need for a performance audit or may enlighten this committee and other legislators about what the shape should be of a further performance audit. So with that, I'd like to now proceed to have Cheryl Thresher and Kelly Collins from the state auditor's office proceed with their presentation. And at the end, we will hear from the executive director of the Charter School Commission, Jessica DeBaris, and the co-president of Innovative Schools from the Charter School Association, Rekha Bat. So Cheryl and Kelly, would you please proceed?
Mr. Chairman, may I join them?
Absolutely. I'm very sorry.
Appreciate that. Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. I'm Scott Nelson, Director of Legislation and Policy for State Auditor Pat McCarthy. With me today is Kelly Collins, our Director of Local Audit, and Cheryl Thresher, Program Manager for Schools. We're here to give you an overview of recent audits of charter schools and after which we're happy to take questions. I would point out that we have a statutory requirement to do these audits. We didn't select any specific schools other than auditing in the normal course of audits. These audits are statutorily intended to replace performance audits, which if they were done individually, would take a great deal of time and cost the charter schools a lot of money. So this was a decision of the legislature and these are called accountability audits. And with that, Kelly will present them.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman Paulette and committee members. Thank you for inviting us here today to present to you. I want to give you a quick overview of our presentation today. I'm going to start with giving you a couple of minutes of a background on the state auditor's office, our role as it is with regard to responsibilities per audit across the state. I think this is going to be helpful to give you a little background and context so that will give you an overview of our audit coverage of the K through 12 education in Washington. It's going to give you better context and some familiarity with terminology so that when we specifically talk about our audits of term public schools, you'll have a better understanding of the operational landscape that we'll share with you. And that will give you, again, the context for the guidance and support we've given to them as well as significant audit issues that will present for the fiscal years 19 through 21. We'll finish up our presentation with recommendations for your consideration and then we should have time at the end to take any questions that the chair opens up to. So with that, let's get started. So your committee is accustomed to hearing from our performance audit division. Whenever they issue performance audit, in fact, I think today you're going to hear about one such audit. However, I'd like to take a couple of minutes to give you some background on the audit work that our office performs beyond performance audits. So I'll be, that we'll be discussing throughout the coverage of this presentation. So as the state constitution requires, the state auditor is the auditor of all public accounts in Washington states. So what that means is that we have the responsibility to audit 170 state agencies as well as over 2,200 local governments across the state. Now, Chairman Paulette referred to the bridge of audits that we do, that we typically do three different types of audit to accomplish that audit coverage. The first is called a financial audit, and that's the audit that most people are familiar with. We look at the internal controls over financial reporting as well as applying on a government's financial reporting as of a fiscal year end. The next type of audit we do is called a federal compliance audit, sometimes referred to as a single audit. And that's where we look at the internal controls and compliance with federal grant requirements a government may receive in any one fiscal year. The third type of audit is called the accountability audit, and I think you've heard that referred to a couple of times now. This is the audit that we probably perform the most of, and that's where we look at the internal controls and compliance that a government complies with in performing their operations. So it could be, you know, state laws, or it could be local regulations such as board policy or even contractual requirements. Now, it's important to understand that not every government may receive an audit annually. Depending on a government's size, complexity, and even their operational activities, an audit may cover more than one year, sometimes two or more years at a time. Additionally, some of the larger, more complex governments may require more than one type of audit to be completed. For instance, in addition to an accountability audit, a government may need to have a financial audit to comply with maybe bond requirements or even the federal single audits that I mentioned to comply with federal grant requirements they've received. So considering all the types of governments across the state and their audit needs, the state auditor's office consistently completes and publishes reports for over 2,300 audits in each fiscal year, which if you think about it, is an amazing amount of work that is produced each year. As a reminder, in completing our work, we publish the audit reports that the state auditor's office completes on our website. So we serve as a reporting agency. We are not an enforcement agency or have any enforcement authority to act on any of the issues that we identify in our audits. So let's start to give you a little overview of what our coverage is for K through 12 education in the state, and this is for fiscal year ending 2021 school year. So this visual shows you the 295 common public schools that are typical, the brick and mortar schools, and you're commonly referred to as school districts. So for this type of government, we typically perform all three audit types, the accountability audit, the financial audit, and typically the federal single audit compliance audit. Now, next, located across the state, we audit nine educational service districts, which overseen provide support to the public schools originally across the state. Now, some charter public schools contract with educational service districts for additional support as well. And for the educational service districts, we typically perform accountability, financial statement, and federal single audits as well. Next are the 12 charter public schools. Again, this is for fiscal year ending 21. Those, for charter schools, we only perform accountability audits. And that's because of their nonprofit status, their financial in a, if it's applicable, the federal single audits are performed by a separate CPA firm. We will review the work of CPA firm and decide to accept it in lieu of our own. And then those audits are posted on our website as well. Next, there are seven state tribal education compact schools where we perform accountability audits only. They operate under a compact with OSPI on behalf of the state of Washington, which dictates our audit coverage. And then finishing out the diagram here, we also, the office also audits the Office of Superintendent Public Instruction and the Charter School Commission. Both state agencies receive accountability audits and have received performance audits in the past years. All right, so let's move on to go over specifically about charter public schools. I thought it would be helpful to give you a little bit of a timeline about charter schools, a little history before we get started. As you can see on the diagram, charter schools were first established in 2012. And then as the timeline shows, there's been some significant legal decisions related to their existence over the years. However, in 2018, the Supreme Court upheld their constitutionality of the charter schools to operate in the state. So following the 2018 ruling, this slide gives you a visual of the number of charter schools opening and closing over time. So just to kind of orient you here a little bit, the green bar shows you the number of charter public schools open in the fiscal year. The yellow bar identifies schools opened during the fiscal year, and then the red bar identifies schools closing during that fiscal year. And at the top of each, each of the fiscal year shown, you'll see how many of them that we have audited. So for the 2018-19 school year, there were 12 charter schools operating for that school year in which we audited 11 of them. Two opened during, at the beginning of the school year, and then three closed by the end of the school year. On to the next fiscal year, for the 2019-20 school year, there were 10 charter schools operating for the school year. Eight were audited. And in that one school year, one school opened for six weeks and then it closed during the same school year. For the 2020-21 school year, there were 12 charter schools operating for the school year, and 11 were audited. Three schools opened at the beginning of the school year and one closed at the end of the school year. And then the last, the last bar graph shows the school year that just completed for 2022. We haven't done any audits of that yet. But as you can see, there were 16 charter schools operating for the school year, and there was five schools that have opened at the beginning of the year. So as you can see, there have been a lot of changes in the number of charter public schools operating from year to year. It's important to note that we have provided educational services to students for all three of the fiscal years. And then four of the nine charter public schools operating all three years had no issues rising to the level of finding, which is our most significant audit level of reporting. And then I want you to know that the specific charter schools comprising all this activity is represented in a table at the end of your PowerPoint. That way you have the specific schools making up the composition of this activity. All right, so before we get into audit issues, I thought it was important to let you know that that the state auditor's office does work closely with the Charter School Commission, the Office of Superintendent Public Instruction, and then Spokane School District, which is another charter authorizer to ensure that all the charter public schools have the resources they need to understand what the compliance requirements are. So that has consisted of developing and presenting trainings for the new charter schools designed to assist their onboarding as well as we have a help desk available through a client portal that's actually available to all the governments across the state in which subject matter experts speak to any questions that they may have and also assist with documentation requirements as well as directing to available records retention requirements. All right, so now let's get into the audit issues that we've identified for charter schools for, again, the three-year fiscal period of 192021. So what we did was we assessed all the audit issues for those three fiscal years, and we boiled it down to three categories that we thought represented the most significant issues represented. Now you'll see under each of the three categories that we have presented, we have reportable issues. So that entails audit findings or management letter items that we've issued in an audit. So in the first category, Open Public Meetings Act compliance, we've identified eight reportable issues. Under Aportment Funding Compliance, we identified 13 reportable issues, and then under Safeguarding Public Resources, we identified 15 reportable issues. So let's take a look at each of these areas a bit further and so they can better understand the scope of our work and the specific issues we identify. So we'll start with the Open Public Meeting Act compliance. In that, we look to the contract that's between the actual charter school and the commission for the compliance criteria. So first, we look to see that the meeting minutes clearly document all the actions taken by the governing body and are retained for both audit and historical purpose in accordance with applicable records retention requirements. So some examples of board actions that should be documented in the meeting minutes are approval of expenditures such as payroll, including any stipends, and then approval of contracts, including supplemental contracts. Additionally, we look to ensure that the expenditures are timely approved by the board at a minimum every 30 days as required by state law. A third area we review is the use of executive sessions. Executive sessions are allowable to charter public schools similar to other local governments, but they must adhere to the specific criteria such as documenting the level, purpose, the timelines for entering and concluding, and also no action taken in the meeting. So as presented in this slide, we see persistent problems with these three areas during our review of Open Public Meeting Act compliance for charter public schools. So our next significant area of audit issue is Aportment Funding Compliance. Now, Aportment Funding is comprised of three main areas. There's enrollment reporting, staff reporting, and then transportation. Our work identified the most significant audit risk is in the area of enrollment and staff reporting. So let's talk about enrollment first. Charter public schools, just like Charter public schools, just like common schools, provide many types of enrollment programs to students. We audit enrollment regularly because it's a main funding driver for distribution of apportionment dollars. The types of enrollment programs we select for audit are driven by identified risks. Unique to each school and may, it may be as a result of a citizen complaint. So just to give you a background, all students are basic enrollment students first. However, some types of enrollment receive additional funding on top of the basic enrollment funding. But as a result, have additional compliance requirements they must meet to receive that additional funding. So basic enrollment refunding requires a school to support student participation and attendance. Schools are not allowed to claim students for funding who do not meet all of those requirements. Additionally, if the school has not maintained the documentation. To support the student attendance and participation, they are not allowed to claim the basic enrollment funding. Additionally, charter schools must have an enrollment policy approved by their authorizer. Whether that's the Charter Commission or Spokane School District in the case of Washington here. In their contract. They may not claim funding for any students who do not meet the criteria in their contract. Enrollment-related concerns that we've identified in our audits are depicted here on the slide. So not following enrollment policies approved by their authorizers in the charter contracts. Second is lack of support for full-time equivalent claimed for basic enrollment. Third is missing documentation and late evaluations in IEP for students enrolled in special education. And then fourth, English language learners not receiving language proficiency testing within the required time period. And a lack of documentation supporting student eligibility. Next, the second apportionment area or audits found noncompliance with is staff reporting. Staff reporting is a significant apportionment funding driver based on the level of education. And years of experience and certification for teaching staff. All schools reporting their staff to OSPI is in a snapshot reflecting all staff who have contracts in place as of October first of each year. Staff holding a teaching position should be reported as certified. However, they must have a current Washington State teaching certificate. No person is counted as a qualified teacher who does not hold a valid teacher's certificate. Or permit issued by the state. State law allows for exceptions in certain situations, however, they must be properly documented. In the past two years of audits, we found three charter schools that reported a significant number of teachers who did not hold a current Washington State teaching certificate. Incorrectly reported staff information will typically impact the funding of the schools received. Now, it's important to note that any errors identified in the apportionment funding during our audits for whether it's enrollment. Or staff reporting are submitted on a document called an audit memorandum and are resolved through the audit resolution with the OSPI. Again, that goes back to where I identified that the State Auditor's Office is not enforcement, we're reporting, so we work with OSPI to resolve those issues. Okay, let's move on to our third and final audit issue category, and that's the inadequate controls to safeguard public resources. Which can encompass a lot of areas, but with a common result. We have several examples to share with you. So first, our work noted that it was common to find unsupported payroll expenditures, including retroactive payments. And unsupported adjustments which are unallowable. Additionally, we found minimal board oversight of contracts which include. Properly improving them timely and payments in accordance with approved terms. Second, accrued leave is a significant benefit to employees. We found that frequent policy changes to the crew process and sometimes occasional human error. Coupled with a lack of consistent tracking practices contribute to inaccurate leave accounting. And ending balances at some charter public schools. Third, given the charter public school community is evolving, they occasionally will support one another in their operations or management. We found two instances where one charter public school lent public funds to another charter public school. This is unallowable. Fourth, the contract between the commission and the charter schools requires annual inventory of public resources. That includes theft-sensitive assets. In addition to regarding the value of the assets in the financial statements, it's important to ensure that all assets purchased with public bonds are safeguarded from loss or misuse. We noted several instances where charter schools did not conduct an inventory timely or at all on occasion. And then fifth, during our review of various expenditures across several schools, we found public funds were used for unallowable purposes. Some examples include not tracking restrictions on funding sources and the appropriate use of those monies. Disbursements to support a nonprofit fundraising event, and lack of documentation to demonstrate the business purpose of expenditures. Many of the issues identified in our most recent audits could have been averted if school boards were more actively involved in the oversight and review process of the financial activity. Additionally, we noted increased risk for noncompliance when charter schools outsource management responsibilities. We also noted that charter management organizations or CMOs. Which are a nonprofit organization that generally operate more than one charter school. Have had difficulties complying with requirements for operating schools in the state of Washington. There are two CMOs in Washington State operating, and they oversee five schools in total, charter schools in total. The challenges that they have, we've encountered is the. Documentation not retained or available for audit purposes. A lack of access to records because they're not held at the school, and the staff maintain the records are located out of state. So now I shared a lot of information, so let me summarize. Our audits found three key challenges for Washington's evolving and growing charter public schools. The first is a lack of compliance with open public media requirements, reducing transparency. The second is a lack of documentation supporting apportionment, reporting, and subsequent funding. And the third is a lack of board oversight significantly contributes to the deficiencies for safeguarding public resources. Now, the fundamental problem leading to many of the reportable issues in our audits can be traced to the challenges of determining the authoritative guidance in these areas. Which is currently located in the individual charter school contract with the commission. Now, while we understand the need for individual charter school contracts for flexibility in the curriculum instructional methodologies. Those areas related to state funding and other compliance areas such as OPMA. Would be more consistently adhered to if it was clearly addressed in state law specific to charter public schools. Now I bring you to our final slide. Which I think the bottom line is, we would recommend to the committee that they provide clear authority. Clear statutory authority and stronger oversight. In chairman, I can say in my thirty years working at the State Auditor's Office, it's been my experience that it doesn't matter. If you're a large government such as the city of Seattle. Or a small special purpose government, governments such as a drainage district in King County. Taxpayers expect that there would be the same fiscal accountability for the use of public funds. Transparency in government operations. And then the safeguarding of public resources by the board in governance. So with that expectation. We make the two recommendations. The first, that the committee codify and more clearly identify charter public schools in state law. In the areas that they expect compliance. I can't emphasize enough how much during the audits, we have to actually look to the contract. Between the charter school and the commission. To point to for guidance for compliance, whether it's OPMA, the apportionment funding, and records retention. The second is more clearly identify the responsibilities of oversight by the charter school. Operations, specifically at the board level would be an improvement. And so with that, I think we yield back to sir, any time that you would accommodate for questions.
Thank you very much. What I'd like to do now is have our. Agency responses, and then we'll open up because I assume that those agency responses from OSPI and. You know, will perhaps answer some of the questions, but. But we have in response. Jessica DeBarros and. Reka, I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name, Reka Bat. Would you like to respond? Or answer questions? Which would you prefer?
Thank you, Chair. I'm Jessica DeBarros, interim executive director of the Washington State Charter School Commission, and. Just by way of background, the commission was created by the legislature as an independent state agency to monitor and provide oversight. Hold charter public schools accountable to high standards of quality. And we work in close collaboration with other entities such as the SAO to hold schools accountable. We're really grateful for this opportunity to highlight the system of oversight and how it works, so thank you for that. Last week, we had a commission meeting, a regular scheduled public meeting, and in that meeting, I provided a briefing on the latest accountability audits to those commissioners. And I discussed the corrective actions that our schools have taken. Today's presentation focuses on audits that go back as far as twenty nineteen, and it's just an example of how the auditor is one part of a system. That evaluates our charter public schools and makes recommendations for improvement. We're really grateful for the expertise and professionalism of the SAO, and. We work in partnership with other pillars of a larger public charter school accountability system. So in addition to the commission and the SAO, we partner with. The local school boards of each of the charter public schools as well as OSPI. So we work together to ensure that our charter public schools are meeting the high standards that the legislature sets. It's helpful to see this retrospective approach of the audits to show how those issues are flagged and addressed, and in some cases, in many cases, those issues. Are characterized as persistent, however, a lot of what was featured today were also issues that the commission had surfaced before the audits. Took action on, and the schools have been held accountable to fully resolve these issues. I think it's also important to understand that the charter public school system in Washington is relatively new, and for the handful of issues that were highlighted today. There are a lot of other charter public schools that did not have findings and that are exceeding expectations to serve our students. And we, we have a highly rigorous oversight system, and we have a resolve to support students in the communities that are served by charter public schools. I want to be clear that the only flexibility charter public schools have as it pertains. To flexibility is customizing the curriculum for students and communities they serve, so. That flexibility comes with additional layers of accountability to ensure students' needs are met. And that the outcomes meet expectations. Thank you for the opportunity to highlight this system.
Thank you very much, and please help me with pronunciation. Is it Reka? Reka?
It's Reka. Good morning, Chair Paula, committee members, agency colleagues. My name is Reka Bat, and I'm a co-president at the Washington State Charter Schools Association. We're a statewide nonprofit membership organization. And we support the startup and operation of charter public schools. Thank you for the opportunity to participate today. Here in Washington, our public ecosystem has and must continue to evolve to meet the many and different needs. Of students and families in our state in many different ways. And we believe charter public schools are an important piece of this ecosystem. And that Washington has created a strong framework in which we have the ability to expand opportunities for families. And we believe charter public schools and the accountability structures in place are working. The schools that we support believe that the state auditor, like the Charter School Commission. Play an integral role in ensuring that charter schools operate in a manner that complies with both the law and their charter school contracts. And we're proud that Washington's charter public school law is one of the strongest in the country. Mandating the highest standards of accountability and oversight for charter schools. For the SAO's last slide, the recommendations made around OPMA, records retention, apportionment for charter schools are codified into our state law. In order to expand educational choices for Washington families and foster educational innovation. This act was specifically designed to pair increased autonomy with strong accountability measures that involve a number of parties. This includes students and families. Because charter schools don't have students who are obligated to attend based on where they live. They're accountable first and foremost to the students and families that do attend. Boards are a critical piece of this. In addition to their fiduciary responsibilities. Charter public school boards receive trainings about their obligations as party to the charter contract. They have to take the same equity trainings required for traditional school district boards. And like traditional district boards, they're comprised of committed professional community members. And of course, state agencies. Charter public schools value the oversight role played by the State Auditor's Office, OSPI, and the schools' authorizers. They ensure that the schools operate in a transparent manner that is consistent with the charter contract and state federal law. However, the framing in the SAO presentation that we heard today seems to lack context and is somewhat misleading. First, the use of persistent concerns suggests that these are ongoing problems. When in fact, based on the publicly available audit reports, the issues identified as audit findings have been corrected or corrections are underway. Next, the presentation doesn't offer context or point to the comparison with traditional common school districts. This is relevant because while the SAO has presented information to the committee about charter public schools. It has performed similar routine audits of district schools without generalizing their concerns to the entire education system. Based on a scan of the SAO audit reports database, it appears that the percentage of audit reports with findings for charter schools, which is eleven percent. Is slightly lower than the percentage of audit reports with findings for district schools at thirteen percent. Furthermore, the summary of key challenges on slide eighteen suggests that all charter schools are currently experiencing these challenges, rather than some schools having faced some of them. In the past before subsequently correcting them. Which is a more accurate description of the overall audit findings for charter schools in the SAO's public report. We appreciate the SAO's verbal mention today that four schools audited in the nineteen twenty twenty-one period had no issues. I think it's also important to know that six of the currently operating charter schools that have been audited to date have had zero findings. And that the SAO has identified areas of improved practice and strong compliance in their reports as well. Finally, management letters. These are designed to provide schools with feedback and recommendations in service to continuous improvement of internal systems. And are not typically published with audits. Raising them in this context seems contrary to their purpose and spirit. I'd like to close with just a few examples of how charter public schools are delivering strong outcomes and meeting the intent of the Charter School Act. By serving students that are traditionally furthest from opportunity with a high degree of accountability. Charter public schools in Washington serve higher numbers of students from the global majority or BIPOC students and low-income students than the state average. They employ nearly three times the state average of teachers from the global majority, reflecting the students that they serve. And they're getting results. The State Board of Education's annual report. Has consistently found that charter public school students have performed at or above their traditional public school peers on statewide assessments. Per the most recent Smarter Balance assessment delivered in spring of twenty twenty-two, on average. Low-income Black and Latin ex-charter public school students. Outperform their peers in their home districts and across the state in all tested subjects. Nearly a third of the class of twenty twenty-two in charter public schools were first-generation high school graduates. All graduated college-ready, and seventy percent of them applied and were accepted into four-year colleges. I share these stats because charter public schools are meeting a diverse cross-section of student needs that have gone unmatched. And they are proud to be learning institutions that work to meet accountability standards in service to their students and families. I thank you for your time and attention, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you both for being prepared and presenting to us as well. I do want to say that the Auditor's Office sent invitations to testify to charter school representatives. A week ago on October twelfth, and I appreciate your appearing today. I want to kick off question for the state auditor's office here. And in, and I appreciate that you approached this with the same type of recommendations we would have for performance audits and making recommendations to the legislature, which was our goal here. As the staff from the auditor's office knows, as I mentioned earlier, I've worked with state auditor's office to have a performance audit, more than one of performance of our public school districts, no SPI in regard to special education services, which my colleagues are not surprised that I'm focused on. And I'd like to ask if you examined from a performance audit point of view, or if we might need further work, the reported discrepancy of 300% between some public charter schools and in terms of students with individual education plans, in other words, students with identified, evaluated, assessed disabilities, 300% lower than in the surrounding school district. And if the population served is the, those people with the greatest opportunity gaps, relevant literature suggests that the actual need would be greater than the 14% roughly served by district wide. So have you looked at that issue? And is that something where we might want to have further evaluation of performance in terms of whether or not there are practices or barriers for evaluating students at the schools identified?
Lee, you want to start with that?
I think Sarah wants to take it.
Yeah, I can answer that. We do not look at who is captured or identified. We are only looking at the compliance requirements for reporting. So those students have already been identified and have IEPs and evaluations in place. And we're looking for all the compliance pieces.
So would that be? I, I understand that you only looked then at that compliance. Is that an area of potential follow-up for performance audit about significant under enrollment and practices which appear to be well documented at some of the schools that would reduce the enrollment? And I think the similar is true in terms of whether or not you're examining English language learning with that. Do we need to have a performance audit following up on your work in regard to English language learners?
That, that is correct. We are not looking at how students are identified or served. So yes.
So yeah, you would need to utilize a performance audit if you wanted to have that type of an assessment completed, sir.
Thank you. That I think is one of the key issues that I wanted to bring out in terms of having this meeting and looking at your the whole host of audits you've done to date, whether or not it would be appropriate to do that. We have a number of members who have their hands up and clearly would like to either offer opinions or questions. Going to try to get to the front page here so I can make sure that I'm looking at you in order. I'd ask people to hold their comments to a minute or two if you're not asking a question. And first up, Representative Stokesbury.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a couple of questions for the, for the auditors. They, they were sort of addressed by what we heard from the Charter Schools Commission, but kind of want to still ask the auditor. The first is how these findings compare to findings for common K-12 schools, both in terms of the types of findings and the frequency of findings?
For the most part, I think they're very similar. They've just been larger issues. Well, I'm referring to the certification findings because that is unique to charter schools. Occasionally, we will identify a teacher that let their certification lapse and got it like a month renewed a month late, but not as pervasive within a school district or as far as quantity or as for as big a time period. Most of the other findings are very similar to those that we would find in public schools. There are more exceptions to inventory and small and attractive assets, payroll. And that seems to occur more frequently than it does in a regular school district.
May I ask a follow-up or two, Mr. Chair?
Yes, indeed, you may.
Um, so again, you mentioned at, at the beginning, I think, kind of orally, I didn't see it written in the slides that not all charter schools had a finding. Also, I think would appreciate a little, I'd appreciate kind of some, some clarification on that, what, what either, either number or percentage wise, how many charters didn't see a finding. Also, there seems to be some ambiguity around the difference between or what the meaning of persistent means. And perhaps it's a, it's a term of art within the world of auditing that maybe it has a little bit different, different meaning in common parlance. But could you elaborate on the extent to which you've seen charter schools or the commission already address these issues? Or have begun taking steps to address them?
I'd say the staffing one has been addressed. And I know the commissioners work closely with the schools to ensure that teachers have certification and with OSPI that they're following the processes. Some of the others, when I say they're persistent or reoccurring, is they start out at a lower level. And when, when we come back the next year, we're looking to see have those issues been resolved? Are they still there? And it appears as far as inventory and payroll, those keep reoccurring from year to year. Some of them seem to rise in the level of reporting as they go along. And that, that to me means persistent. It's not being resolved and put to bed so that it's not occurring again.
And then to clarify there, we identified that there was four of the nine charter schools that had operations for all three fiscal years. I had no issues rising to our highest level of reporting, which is a finding.
Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Huff?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. But my question has nothing to do with the presentation, although there are some, some differences of opinion within that presentation. I thought they were, they were good. I have a question regarding earlier, your directive to find Representative Stokesbury's motion out of order. Is this the appropriate time to discuss that? Or what would you prefer?
I think that we should discuss that at the end of the meeting after we've had questions for the presenters and heard our second presentation, if you, if it's appropriate at all. So if you want to
I would guess it's, I would guess it's appropriate, but waiting would be relevant. That would be your decision, no problem.
We're, thank you. We are gonna, we're taking questions. And as I said, if you want to offer a comment on this, you're welcome to offer a comment on the, on it's not just I mean, and the presentation, not just questions. Okay. Okay. Then we'll move to Representative Fai.
Thank you, Chair Paulette. I'm a little bit trying to sort through this. It's not a subject matter I deal with a lot, except for the, I guess, the fiscal accountability part of it. But I think I heard from the testimony after the audit report that there were some schools that had really no problems. And so I want to get the perspective of the auditor about that and also whether progress has been made over time and whether there has been technical support provided by SPI or another agency in order to better equip the charter schools to meet the requirements.
Well, I can't speak to the support that OSPI has provided. I think there are some schools that have had, you know, minor, what we call housekeeping exit items, may have had some issues rise to the level of a management letter and then address them. So there are schools that are progressing forward. And even those that I think have had some large issues are working to resolve those either through the resolution process or working with the commission and OSPI to gain a better understanding of what's required of that.
Thank you. I'm wondering, I'm wondering if Jessica, on behalf of the commission, would have anything you'd like to add to Representative Fai about improvement following audits and support for charter schools? Is there anything you'd like to add?
Absolutely. Thank you for the opportunity. We take these audits very seriously, as I mentioned, and we take the information, although it's retrospective and in some cases it is highlighting issues that have been surfaced and corrected. All of the audit, the accountability audit information goes into performance reports that we issue for every school every year. And those reports are used when the commission makes important decisions such as school renewal. Additionally, when issues such as special education arise, although OSPI does, is responsible for monitoring special education, the commission collaborates with OSPI to ensure that schools are following any corrective actions that are required or surfaced either by OSPI, the SAO, or the commission.
Can you clarify on that? Maybe we'll, I, as you can tell, I'm very deeply concerned about what was, has been identified as documented lack of evaluations for specialized services and the very low enrollment of students at to, I believe, charter schools, 300% below the surrounding school district. So what is the commission's role when, if there is a finding that a school dis, this charter school is not, does not have certificated special ed or ANL teachers providing services as required or if there's significant issues in terms of identified about the level of enrollment, what is the commission's role?
Happy to speak to that. For clarity, with regard to the, the word finding, there hasn't been a, an SAO finding with regard to these issues. However, when a concern is brought up, that is something that can, that the commission takes seriously. And we have a inquiry process that we use for that. So the first step is gathering information, which we do have an inquiry process into the network of schools that you're referring to that was reported on. So the commission has taken that action. And we gather information. In some cases, it goes into an investigation. And that process can go up to notifying the school that there is an official problem and providing due process for that school to respond. A corrective action plan, which we have issued correction, corrective action plans for schools when it's necessary. And that process can go all the way up to revoking the contract. So that hasn't happened in the history of the commission with a relatively new sector. Luckily, when we've had to issue corrective action plans, those problems have been corrected.
So I don't want to take up more time from, there are plenty of questions here, but I'd appreciate if you shared with the committee and through our staff, the inquiry that you have said you've opened into impact schools regarding those special education issues. Thank you. Representative Berg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So my first question, just so I understand, and we're comparing apples to apples. The original chart that talked about the 295 school districts, and then you talked about the 12 charters. Now, are those 12 charter schools or charter districts?
Charters are schools. They're not an individual school and they have, they receive a separate audit.
Okay.
It's composed of multiple schools.
Multiple schools. So I didn't, I'm just, and the reason why I'm pointing that out is because we're talking about a very small subsection. We, we're looking at 295 districts. And we're attempting to compare, to a certain extent, services, service levels, audit performance to 12 individual schools versus 295 districts. So that's the, that was my first question. The second question, I'm going to preface it just so that you understand where I'm coming from. And it's as a parent. So I'm a parent of a global majority, multiple global majority children. And it sounds as though these 12 schools, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think either folks from the SAO or Reka, a lot of these schools, the service that they provide are to global majority students, traditionally in other vernaculars called minority students. Is that correct? Okay. So, and so as a parent, I can tell you, you know, I have, my children have attended public schools their entire life. That said, we've also done alternative learning within the public school confines. And we've always considered ourselves public school parents. So for charter school parents, would they consider themselves public school parents?
I can speak to that. Charter schools are public schools in Washington State.
So these, these are, so we're talking about public school parents, public school children at 12 public schools. So that said, I've also had the privilege within the public schools of having subject matter experts teach my children. These are not certificated teachers. They were through parent partnerships, which is another way that our, our state sanctions education via our public school system. And again, these, my, my kids, you know, starting in elementary school, they were not taught chemistry by a certified chemistry teacher. They were taught by a PhD chemist. They were never taught math by a certified teacher within our public school system, although attending public schools, they were taught by a PhD math professor as a subject matter expert. So under our current system of public schools, and just again, correct me if I'm wrong, that is allowed because they did it on a public school campus within a parent partnership. Is that correct?
I'm not quite sure the learning situation you're describing, but there are exceptions allowed within our state to having non-certificated instructors teach children. So if it falls within those parameters and went through the process and was documented, then yes.
And, and I'm, and I'm asking that just for clarification, especially for our viewing public. So they understand that as we talk about the findings, which it sounds as though the paperwork findings and some of the lack of certification, that it's not a, it's not uncommon for children in different educational settings within the public school system to be taught by non-certificated teachers. So, so that said, part of the findings, and I guess this would be a question you know, for SAO as well as maybe the folks from charters, would it be helpful to have more insight and over, or I guess oversight might be too strong of a word, but communication with the local public school districts? Because I think of the support that they have, even open public meetings, acts, you know, WASDA support, policy support, all of the different documents we have. As a former school board director on two school boards, we had a lot of support, a lot of documentation to make sure we were coloring within the lines. to make sure we were coloring within the lines, if you will. So is my understanding that these findings, it would be helpful to give that type of support to these, again, 12 schools, not 12 school districts, but 12 schools to help them better serve children?
I think the commission can probably better address and answer that.
Yeah, Jessica.
Thank you. Yes, that is a goal of the sector to promote collaboration between public charter schools and public school districts. And we, at the commission, have shared resources such as WASDA and WASDA's model policies with charter schools. We encourage attendance of public charter school board members at the WASDA conference. And in fact, we have three commissioners on the charter commission who are former public school board members in Washington.
Okay. Thank you for that. And my last question, Mr. Chair, thank you for your indulgence. As we talk about special ed, and Mr. Chair, you brought that up with special ed and, and the, the folks that are or aren't being served within our charter system who are in need of special education or IEPs. I guess, I'm just looking at those numbers and that direct correlation. And again, having utilized alternative learning within my district, I know there was not a one-to-one correlation around the traditional public schools. So at the ALA that we used, there were not going to be as many specialized students for a variety of reasons at that particular ALA. And I'm wondering, is, is that really, is it a true apples-to-apples comparison? When we talk about special ed and special ed services at charters, if we're trying to say they have to be parity with their surrounding schools? Or is, I guess, am I missing something there? Because I've, when I look at alternative learning within our public schools, it's never apples-to-apples with the traditional schools. But am I missing something?
I think that that might be something that we would evaluate in a performance audit discussion. I could answer you at great length about the identification of students with disabilities and their percentages. But I'm not answering the questions here. And so I think that you could flag that for additional audit question about how that is evaluated.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I would ask quickly, Kelly and Cheryl, if the state auditor's office is, receives documentation that someone without certification falls within another approval category, you would not issue a non-compliance finding, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Okay. Senator Rivers, we're going to try to move through questions here so, so we can get to our second item.
I'll be quick. Thank you, Mr. Chair, because I'm super excited about the next audit review coming. I guess, just a quick comment, first of all, gratitude to Representative Berg. As a former school teacher myself, I'm so grateful to have the terminology of global majority. I think that's beautiful, phenomenal. You know, when I was on Senate Education, I will tell you the stories of students coming out of the, or who are engaged in the public schools that are charter schools, just incredible stories. So super pleased with the outcomes that we're getting. And you know, when I first saw this on the agenda, I was, my, my ruffles were, or my feathers were a bit ruffled because I thought, man, this kind of came out of nowhere, feels like surprise. But after listening, I'm just super proud of our commission. They heard about problems, they addressed problems, which is basically what the state board of education does when they get issues that pop up. So I, after hearing the presentations today, I guess I'm just really excited about the job that our, our charter school commission's doing to make sure that they're, you know, certainly not perfect, but heck, neither are the rest of the schools in our state. So gratitude to Representative Berg and also to the, the charter school commission for doing a fine job at identifying issues even before the auditors do and proceeding to address those issues. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for your comments. Senator Wilson?
This is Jessica. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a quick question. I, and I might have missed it. I had to walk away for a second. Are the, are all of your teachers certificated now? No, I guess I told Rika or Jessica.
Yeah, it is a requirement that all teachers are certificated.
Okay, so that, that has been taken care of. And okay, all right.
There is a corrective action plan.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. And Senator Short, our last question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, I, I think because of the presentation and because of the fact that many points were brought, brought back from several years ago, I guess, question for the auditors first, and then, Mr. Chair, I have one for, for Jessica and maybe Rika. First of all, of all the things that you've presented today, are there, are there issues outstanding? Like, how many of these things have been fixed? Especially since many of them were management letters and not findings? And what, what are still outstanding?
There are some still things in audit resolutions, so I don't know if they've been resolved. But I think the management and internal controls over inventory and payroll are still things that we're dealing with.
I would say that until we do a subsequent audit, that we wouldn't be able to speak to whether things have been fully addressed. As I spoke to in the presentation, you know, any corrective action to address the issues that end up in audits are referred to OSPI through the audit resolution. And so until we do a subsequent audit, we wouldn't know where the schools stand on the results we reported.
Okay. Second question, and it can be both for audit and, and the commission and the association. Just because of the extraordinary, and I realize this has to do with more of the last couple of years, but the extraordinary challenges that everyone had under COVID. And I look at our educational system and the challenges of going purely remote and all of the challenges associated with now learning loss and now how we're, you know, how we're going to tread through that. I, I'm wondering, does, did any of this compound, did COVID compound in any way? What, you know, what might be looked at as non-compliance? And can you talk about how you went through that part of, you know, the last couple of years?
I think it's safe to say that COVID had an impact on everyone, but there were a lot of exceptions to the rules and various circumstances to accommodate the situation. And of course, we looked at all of those and considered all of those. There were exceptions to getting IEPs and evaluations done on time because they couldn't meet a person. So things that we questioned took into consideration all of the circumstances around COVID.
So then none, none of those ended up in any of these management findings or, or management letters and findings from the COVID?
Yeah, that is correct. If they were following the exceptions to the rules, then it wasn't an issue and we would not have recorded it.
Okay. Thank you.
That includes, thank you, Senator Short. That concludes our questions. I want to thank our presenters from the state auditor's office, Scott Nelson, Cheryl Thresher, and Kelly Collins. And on behalf of the charter school commission, Jessica DeBarros. And for the association, Rika Blatt. Thank you all very much for joining us today. And I believe there will be further discussion about potential for other performance audits. And the process for those, I think, is, and perhaps Scott will correct me if I'm wrong, but the auditor's office often convenes and meets with interested parties in regard to scoping performance audits. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. So that can, concludes item one for today's agenda. And now we will move to the prescription monitoring program, evaluating system processes and program oversight, presented from by Carolyn Cato and Michelle Fellows with the state auditor's office. And then we have on your agenda, I'm not going to read everyone's name, a number of people from agencies and associations who are available to answer questions.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. My name is Carolyn Cato, and I'm a senior performance auditor with the Office of the Washington State Auditor. With me today is my colleague, Michelle Fellows, who is also a performance auditor. Today, we are going to present the results of the audit that evaluates the prescription monitoring program at the Department of Health. Before we begin the presentation, I'd like to take a moment to thank staff and management at the Department of Health, the regulatory boards and commissions, and the Washington State Hospital and Medical Associations for their cooperation and assistance throughout this audit. I'd like to begin with a summary of our key results. We found that DOH needs a more comprehensive process to ensure prescription monitoring data is sufficiently complete and timely. We also found that there is an opportunity to improve and expand opioid prescribing reports to more medical professionals. Lastly, we found that state law does not allow the Department of Health to share identifiable PMP data for the purpose of independent oversight of the program. The opioid epidemic continues to be a concern in Washington. When opioid medications are abused, misused, or over-prescribed, they can contribute to dangerous drug interactions, substance use disorder, overdoses, and deaths. Over the last two decades, more than 9,000 Washington residents have died from drug overdoses that involve prescription opioids. As of 2021, the rate of patients prescribed opioids in Washington has dropped by 45% since peaking in 2015. However, over a quarter of all opioid-related deaths in 2020 still involve prescription opioids. The Centers for Disease Control and Prevention points out that improving the way opioids are prescribed can still help to reduce the number of people who misuse, abuse, or overdose from them. Prescription monitoring programs can be used to help ensure patients retain access to safe, effective pain management while reducing opioid over-prescribing. The state legislature established the prescription monitoring program with the goal of improving patient care, reducing the abuse of controlled substances, and helping medical professionals reduce over-prescribing. The program became fully operational in 2011 and is administered by the Department of Health. The PMP system is a statewide database medical professionals can check when they prescribe or dispense opioids and other controlled substances to help inform their decisions about patient care. How the PMP works at the most basic level is that pharmacies upload prescription records to the PMP system when they fill or sell a controlled substance. Then the system performs automated checks to identify missing, invalid, or incorrectly formatted data before it is uploaded to the database. The system will check to see if there are invalid records, such as those that are missing a required field, and send a notification to the pharmacy to correct the error. Once prescription records are uploaded to the system, providers are required in certain instances to check the PMP database to see what medications a patient has received. Our audit aimed to answer two questions. Is program data sufficiently complete and accurate and timely to meet the needs of prescribers and other users when making decisions about patient care? And could the state's PMP system be used to monitor opioid prescribing and dispensing patterns and help reduce opioid abuse and misuse? For the first audit question, we found that DOH needs a more comprehensive process to ensure PMP data is sufficiently complete and timely for providers. The audit identified three main issues with DOH's current process for monitoring whether pharmacies are complying with PMP reporting rules. First, we found that DOH does not monitor whether pharmacies promptly submit prescription records. We also found that DOH has not ensured pharmacies correct submission errors. The final area is that DOH lacks a process to determine if pharmacies have submitted all required prescriptions to the PMP system. We'll discuss these issues in more detail in the next slides. State law requires pharmacies to upload prescription information within one business day of distributing the medication to the patient. DOH currently does not assess whether pharmacies have uploaded their data to the PMP within one day of distributing as required by state law. In January of this year, DOH started to conduct a limited review to identify pharmacies that had not submitted any records on a given day and reaching out to those pharmacies that most often failed to report any prescriptions to the PMP. However, this process does not allow DOH to identify which pharmacies routinely take too long to upload individual prescriptions. This means that they do not know if there are any ongoing issues with certain pharmacies meeting this requirement. We analyzed a month's worth of de-identified PMP data to see how many records were not meeting the required timeframe. We found roughly one quarter of PMP records were submitted a day or more late. Only around 4% of records were three or more days late. Yet this represents about 27,000 records that were not available to prescribers during that time. We found that the current state law and rule about when pharmacies need to upload prescriptions do not align. The law says within one day of distributing, but the rule says within one day of dispensing. This could cause confusion about how to complete the date field for the prescription record. DOH officials said pharmacies could interpret dispensing as when it is filled behind the counter, while distributing suggests when it is sold to the patient. Also, pharmacies that have sold a prescription are not required to enter the date sold field in the PMP system. For these reasons, DOH has indicated they are hesitant to conduct an analysis on the timeliness of prescription records submitted to the PMP. Not until recently did DOH start to check to see if pharmacies are correcting errors. This is a concern because when the system detects an error in a required field, it will not be uploaded to the system unless a pharmacy corrects it. This means that the patient's prescription history in the PMP would be incomplete. We estimated that about 12,000 records over the course of the year were never corrected. Overall, this is a very small percentage of total records that are missing from the PMP, just 0.1% of 12 million records. Most pharmacies were doing a good job at correcting records with errors. However, eight pharmacies submitted roughly half of the records with uncorrected errors. This shows that if DOH reached out to these eight pharmacies, thousands of records could have been corrected and added to the PMP database. From our review of the PMP system, we learned that DOH does not have a process in place to determine if pharmacies have submitted all required prescriptions. For example, pharmacies are not required to regularly compare the total number of controlled substances they have sold against the number they have uploaded to the PMP to detect any possible data transmission issues. Also, DOH does not check to see if the pharmacies that receive a waiver from reporting to the PMP should indeed have a waiver. To implement these kinds of changes, DOH would want to work with the pharmacy commission. Overall, DOH has not prioritized monitoring pharmacy compliance with PMP reporting rules. There are three reasons for this. First, the PMP team has staffing limitations. One employee on the seven-person team is responsible for ensuring pharmacies submit prescription information to the PMP system. Second, the PMP system's current analysis tools limit what DOH can do to easily monitor compliance. However, agency officials anticipate the system's vendor will improve the tools in ways that might help to address some of the monitoring gaps identified. The final area is that DOH lacks authority to enforce compliance. If the agency finds a pharmacy has not complied with PMP rules, it can refer the case. it can refer the case to the Pharmacy Commission. It has not done so in recent years. And even if it did, the Pharmacy Commission has limits of its own, including limited staffing and no rule mechanisms it can use to enforce finer infractions. My colleague, Michelle Fellows, is now going to discuss what we learned about opioid prescribing reports and the PMP data limitations encountered in this audit.
Thank you, Carolyn. Opioid prescribing reports help some of Washington's medical professionals understand their own prescribing activity. These providers receive a tailored report every three months that shows how their opioid prescribing compares to recommended state guidelines and the others working in the same specialty. If after reviewing a report, a provider wants any guidance, they can speak with a clinical expert for more information. Using PMP data, the Washington State Hospital and Medical Associations have prepared and distributed the reports since 2019. They do this work as part of the Better Prescribing, Better Treatment Collaborative, which is a peer-based quality improvement program that they oversee. Expanding opioid prescribing reports to more prescribers could help them provide better patient care. Currently, only about 39% of all opioid prescribers in Washington receive these reports. The main reason that many do not is that it's an opt-in program, meaning hospitals and medical groups need to enroll in the program. Only the prescribers who are affiliated with those that enroll will receive a report. We found participation varies by profession. For example, dentists and nurse practitioners are some of the highest opioid prescribers, yet just 1% of the dentists and 32% of the nurse practitioners who have prescribed opioids receive the reports. We spoke with representatives from the hospital and medical associations, along with four other associations that represent prescribers. Together, they identified ways the reports could be enhanced to make them more useful. Potential changes included improving peer comparison information, developing metrics for prescribers treating patients with chronic pain, developing metrics that show how many patients were concurrently prescribed opioids and benzodiazepines, such as Valium and Xanax, as this drug combination has a higher rate of lethal overdose, and also providing targeted guidance on best practices. For example, the collaborative could reach out and offer assistance to individual providers based on their prescribing history. To make the types of changes we've described, the collaborative would need to acquire additional funding and to work with other professional associations. The collaborative is entirely funded and staffed by the hospital and medical associations with no support from the state to produce the reports. The collaborative has said it would need the equivalent of a half-time employee at each of the two organizations to make the kinds of changes we've described. DOH, as the lead state health agency, can help the collaborative by bringing together multiple parties in a work group. The work group could find ways to promote the program, obtain stable funding, facilitate connections across different stakeholder groups, and also share data. The final issue we want to cover is that state law does not allow DOH to share PMP identifiable data for the purpose of independent review of the program. State law restricts access to PMP data in order to protect patients, prescribers, and pharmacies. Because the data includes very sensitive medical information, the legislature has instituted strong guardrails around who may have access to the data and why. However, due to these restrictions, we could not conduct some of the work planned for this audit. This included identifying extreme outliers in the data that might suggest possible doctor shopping or the existence of pill mills, as well as examining certain system processes. To conduct these analyses, we would have needed, at the least, access to indirect identifiers, such as patient zip codes and pharmacy addresses. While planning this audit, we reviewed reports from audits conducted in other states. We learned auditors in Oregon, Colorado, and Louisiana had used PMP data to detect potential instances of doctor shopping, unusually high quantities of opioids prescribed, and dangerous combinations of drugs prescribed. In Washington, neither DOH nor the regulatory licensing boards and commissions analyze PMP data in search of such concerning patterns. Our audit would have reported on if it would be useful for DOH to start reviewing PMP data for this purpose, as is done in some other states. Overall, data access limitations prevent independent audit groups, like our office and the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Committee, from using the data for accountability purposes and to identify opportunities for program improvement. I'll now turn the presentation back over to Carolyn to present the audit's recommendations.
Given our audit findings, we recommend that the Department of Health perform additional compliance activities and update its administrative roles in the WAC to help ensure pharmacies submit all required prescriptions in a timely manner. DOH should also establish a work group to help the collaborative improve the opioid prescribing reports and expand their reach. Additionally, we recommend the Pharmacy Commission make some additions to the pharmacy inspection processes that will help ensure the completeness of PMP data. Finally, we recommend the state legislature amend state law so that independent auditors, such as the Office of the Washington State Auditor and the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Committee can have the authority to access identifiable PMP data. As part of our audit process, our office provides a copy of the report to the audited entities and offers their management an opportunity to provide a response, which is included in the report. In their responses, management raised concerns about our office's recommendation to obtain access to identifiable PMP data. We wanted to provide clarity on a few areas to address these concerns. First, we will not publicly disclose any confidential health or clinical information received through the PMP program, and we would only report results at a summary level. Next, how we use the data in the future would depend on the audit's objectives. We could use the data to evaluate DOH program oversight, and we could use it to identify concerning and prescribing dispensing patterns in the data. If we conducted such an analysis of PMP data, we would consult with the subject matter expert on what should be considered in this review. Our review of the data would not be ongoing as we are a reporting agency and not an enforcement agency. Our role as the state auditor is to identify issues and make recommendations in an audit report for the legislature and audited agency to consider so they could determine if monitoring PMP data in this way would be an effective approach to improving patient and public safety. This concludes our presentation, and we are happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Carolyn. At this point in time, I want to recognize that we have representatives from the State Hospital Association, State Medical Association, former Representative Zach Hudgens, who is Privacy Manager for the Office of Privacy and Data Protection, WOTEC, the Assistant Secretary of the Department of Health, Sasha DeLeon, the Director of Drug Systems for Department of Health, and the Executive Director of the Pharmacy Quality Assurance Commission. Do any of you wish to comment very briefly before we open it up for questions?
Mr. Chair, may I speak for the executive branch?
Please, welcome the former Representative Hudgens, welcome in front of us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and good morning to the committee members. I'm Zach Hudgens, and I work for the Office of Privacy and Data Protection within WOTEC as a privacy manager. I'm here today to speak on behalf of the Governor's Office, the Office of Financial Management, the Office of the Chief Information Officer, the Department of Health, and nine boards and commissions who are audited for this report. I'd like to primarily address the recommendation in the report that would allow the state auditor to get more access to the sensitive health data that they're seeking. But before I begin, I'd like to thank you and the State Auditor's Office for your service to the public. The SAO recommends that the legislature change state law so that they or an outside consultant may get access to sensitive personally identifiable health data. And as documented in the executive branch's joint response, which I believe you have, we strongly recommend that you do not accept this recommendation. To repeat for emphasis, the executive branch's response is to strongly and clearly disagree with changing state law to give anyone access to sensitive personal health data. The privacy principles, which you should have also, are a broad summary of the laws and practices guiding our state agencies. They can help explain why protections put in place by the legislature for this very personal, sensitive health data should remain in place for individuals. But to step back for a little bit of context, our privacy protections are foundational in our state. We're one of only 11 states that have the privacy explicitly called out in our state constitution in Article 1, Section 7. Washington is one of the oldest privacy offices in the country and was one of the first to build its own privacy principles. Washington's Healthcare Information Act is an example of these principles. You also see examples at the federal level of privacy protecting protections in the fair information practices, the FERPA law protecting educational privacy, HIPAA and healthcare, 42 CFR Part 2 protects substance use disorder information. And there are exemptions in the Freedom of Information Act for personal privacy as well. All of these date to the early 70s. But in regards to their recommendation, responsibly using the data requires recognizing there are real cybersecurity risks involved as well. Good security means shrinking the attack surface. Each time you give new access to data or share the data, you increase the risk for disclosure or being leaked or stolen. It doesn't take much more than a quick web search to see that Washington State and some vendors has been the victim of cyber attacks, and any cyber attack poses possible economic, reputational, and legal repercussions. The purpose for which this data was collected should also be limited. The amount of data should be limited, and the data sets should not be replicated. The legislature limited the collection of data to only six elements necessary for the PMP. The data was minimized to the purpose required. Collected data should not be used for other purposes. The legislature is very clear when they, if you look at the PMP RCW, which requires that the information is confidential, exempt from public inspection, copying and disclosure, not subject to subpoena or discovery in any civil action. The current law works and should not be changed. But to drill down on this point a bit, the data elements in the PMP won't answer the auditor's objective, in part because of the limited data that's collected. In order to address their objective, you need more people with more training to look at more data, all of which create more risk. Medical professionals would have to combine data sets of medical records and PMP data to contextualize the information to get close to what the auditors want. The legislature thought about limiting data collecting and made clear who should get access to that sensitive data and what the oversight process should be. And if you look at that legislation from 2007, it's no surprise the legislature got it right because the PMP was part of a bill that implemented recommendations from a blue ribbon commission that was made up of nearly 70 stakeholder groups. The PMP was not a late-in-session, quick-must-pass bill. It was well-worked, discussed, and thought out. There were a lot of eyes on that legislation, and it passed out of the Senate 48 to 0 initially. And when the RCW was updated in 2019, no data elements were changed and only protections were clarified. So to conclude, there is no need to change or update the law. The legislature's protections of people's sensitive data is good policy, and you should not alter those protections. The legislature found the right balance between access and oversight, and the executive branch asks that you stay with the policy as it is and not allow new access. Thank you very much for your time today and consideration of our comments.
Thank you, Mr. Hudgens. I see both Representatives of the State Medical Association, Dr. Schlicker and Shepherd, are wanting to testify. Are you both commenting jointly? Please proceed.
Yeah, that would be great, and I'll go first if that's all right.
Yeah.
Good morning, Chair Pollitt and members of the committee. On behalf of physicians practicing across the state of Washington, my name is Jeff Shepherd. I'm the Director of Policy at the Washington State Medical Association. The Medical Association is committed to addressing the opioid challenge, and we've worked tirelessly with the legislature and state agencies to implement patient-centered prescribing rules and programs, such as better prescribing, better treatment, which was referenced in the auditor's report, that have seen meaningful results. While we support the intent of this audit, which is to improve the effectiveness of the prescription monitoring program, we are deeply troubled by the recommendation that the legislature amend state law to permit the state auditor access to sensitive identifiable PMP data, and we'll be focusing our remarks on that portion of the audit report today. In short, we are concerned that a blunt, non-patient-centered approach to analyzing opioid prescribing data will accelerate the well-documented challenges that some chronic pain patients have with accessing appropriate medications. While these concerns were expressed to the SAO throughout the audit process, they are not meaningfully reflected in the final audit report. And so we submitted a comprehensive response, which is included in that audit report, and we did share that with you all, with the committee members before this meeting. And we'd urge you to read that letter to understand our clinical and patient access concerns with the auditor's recommendations, that we don't have time to go into detail today, as well as the many steps that the legislature has taken over the last several years to significantly improve pain management and reduce mortality related to prescription opioids, while, very importantly, seeking to find the right balance to ensure that the people who need access to these medications do have access to them. Our continued success as a community at ensuring that pain is treated appropriately in our state is contingent on adequately funding the programs and strategies that are currently in place, such as better prescribing, better treatment, that have a demonstrated track record. Unfortunately, there's not a recommendation in the audit to actually fund better prescribing, better treatment to get those .5 FTEs in order to expand the program in areas where we'd like to go. So I would urge the legislature, if needed, to continue to lead the nation by funding the current successful initiatives that are in place and rejecting the SAO's request for access to clinical data. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Schlicker.
Thank you, Chair Pollitt and members of the committee, for the opportunity to join you today remotely. For those of you I haven't met, I'm Nathan Schlicker. I'm an emergency physician practicing in Tacoma, Washington, until 2:00 a.m. this morning. So hopefully, I'm coherent and able to make sense on the opioid epidemic. I've also worked on this issue for the better part of a decade with the legislature on the ERs for emergencies program over a decade ago and now leading the better prescribing, better treatment program you've heard about. Additionally, I'm the past president of the WSMA. So this is a passion of mine, and we appreciate the focus and the SAO's recommendation to fund the program and the recognition of the nation-leading work that we are doing through the public-private partnership, better prescribing, better treatment. But as it alluded to, we have significant concerns around expanding access to this data under kind of three large buckets. First, non-clinical individuals looking at this data can be very problematic. These are complex medical issues, and each specialty, each patient is unique. And you can see the confusion that exists in the data, even in the SAO's presentation today. It's noted that opioids remain a large part of the overdose deaths in Washington State. But if one drills down into that data more, what you will see is that, in fact, over the last five years, prescription opioids, the ones that we are focusing on and targeting, have gone down, while heroin and fentanyl and other street-based substances have gone up. So yes, the total opioid deaths have continued to exist, but the percentage that have involved prescription drugs for which we are targeting have gone down. So those kind of subtle, incredibly important clinical details can get missed when one's not immersed in this issue and understanding it. Additionally, the build-out of the metrics that we've created in the feedback reports have taken hundreds of hours of detailed data analytics to make them be fair and accurate on an issue that is ever-evolving. And as we've run into challenges, we've been willing to edit our methodology. A one-time, once-annual report will miss that and miss that opportunity to provide that data and that exchange of knowledge. Additionally, it's important to recognize that there's clinical differences in each of our specialties. As an emergency physician, I, in fact, write as a specialty many of the prescriptions. We write less We write less than four percent of all the opioids that are out in there when looking at morphine equivalents a day. In contrast, an oncologist will write for large volumes of opioids. Taking care of people at the end of their life. I think we would all agree that that's appropriate. And clinically, uh, you know, indicated by their disease. Understanding those differences and comparing an E R doc on the front line caring for acute fractures to an oncologist, it would not be a valid comparison. So we need to really understand the data and that's why having clinical expertise and having it be a program. Make sure that non-clinical access doesn't potentially make more of a problem. And that really is the second big issue, the chilling effect that this could have. The P D M P was created with the idea that it was about quality improvement and not punitive or legal actions. We have worked hard with the state to do education focused initiatives, providing data and feedback. To physicians, nurse practitioners, P A's and some dentists, uh, not many, uh, because they're not on medical staff. But to work on education quality improvement, we've seen dramatic improvement in that. It's been a collaboration with D O H that we are proud of and it's really leading the nation when we look at the data and how we are improving. And those strong guardrails exist for a reason because patients have the right to privacy. They have the right to, you know, know that their medical information is not going out to other people other than those involved in care and quality improvement. And that's what we're doing. So at the end of the day, when you're talking about having an independent external. Uh, agency that can work to make sure the program and opioids are being prescribed appropriately, you have that. It's better prescribing, better treatment. We have been running this program now for the last five years independently. Working to demonstrate with data, time and again, that opioid prescribing is getting better and more compliant with acute care guidelines. The absolute numbers are going down, providing real education and real feedback to clinicians on the front line. As the, the S A O said, if you want to make the program better, fund the program. And that's what we ask you to do. Allow us to continue to do the work that we've done voluntarily because we believe in this work. We believe in the quality. Improvement efforts. We believe we can make a difference. And let us expand into those areas that we've already identified and provided the S A O with of co-prescribing of long term M E Ds. And really dive into this work of individual feedback. Together, I think we can continue to lead the nation. We've done it for the last decade and I think the future is bright with your support. We just want to make sure that patients have the right to get the care they need and not have their information out there unnecessarily. And with that, I'll yield back. Thank you Chair.
Thank you for your comments. Assistant Secretary Deleon.
Representative Pollitt, Senator Wilson and members of the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Committee. My name is Sasha Deleon and I am the Assistant Secretary of the Health Systems Quality Assurance Division. At the Department of Health, under which the prescription monitoring program or P M P is housed. I am joined today by my colleagues Carly Bartz Overman, the Drug Systems Director. And Marley O'Neil, the Executive Director of the Pharmacy Quality Assurance Commission. Thank you for this opportunity to share the department's perspective on the audit. We appreciate the opportunity to learn from the results of this audit. We acknowledge that the P M P has opportunities to improve reporting compliance. And we value the focus that the audit report brought to this area of work. We will be working diligently to implement many of the recommendations brought forward by the State Auditor's Office. However, we strongly disagree with the state, with the S A O's recommendation. To change state law to gain access to Washingtonians personally identifiable health information from the P M P. The legislature deliberately prescribed in law who can access this personally identifiable health information and under what conditions. We believe the legislative intent, the statute and supporting case law is clear. The P M P was designed as a tool for prescribers and dispensers. To access patient prescription history for schedule two through five drugs to make informed prescribing decisions. The S A O's audit objective attempts to evaluate the P M P against a purpose for which it was not intended. Public agencies have an obligation to handle personal information about Washington residents responsibly. And in a fair and transparent way. We do not believe that the auditor's recommendation to access P M P data meets the principal intent of this guidance. Access to P M P data alone does not provide the information needed to make the determinations implied in the audit objective. Prescribing professionals must analyze both P M P data as well as a patient's medical records. To determine if inappropriate prescribing has occurred. We are currently in the third wave of this opioid crisis. The first wave, which ended in roughly twenty-ten, was driven by over prescribing. Since then, many opioid prevention policies such as P M Ps have been implemented to curb this over prescribing. Today, illicit synthetic opioids such as fentanyl are the driving cause of opioid overdose deaths. As over prescribing is no longer the driver of the epidemic. Focusing additional resources in this area is not an effective way to fight the current wave of the opioid crisis. With that, I would like to once again thank the audit team for their work. And thank you for the opportunity to share our concerns with this committee. And I turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Streeter, you'll have the final comment here and we'll probably only have. Uh, moments for. Couple of questions here.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here today. For the record, my name is David Streeter and I'm here, uh, on behalf of the Washington State Hospital Association. Uh, to give a quick summary of our organization's formal response to the audit that is found, uh, beginning on page fifty-three. Uh, Wishia represents over one hundred hospitals and health systems in our state and our members range. From large straight wide healthcare delivery systems to small rural hospitals serving remote communities. Our organization has been a leader in reducing harm related to opioid misuse and we are a trusted collaborative partner. An innovator that has advanced important elements in acute prescribing, prevention and treatment programs. Uh, we do this work through the Better Prescribing, Better Treatment Program, which is a collaboration between Wishia. The Washington State Medical Association, uh, the Washington Department of Health and the Healthcare Authority. Uh, we support the recommendations in the report to strengthen the Better Prescribing, Better Treatment Collaborative. Uh, the collaborative, uh, was established through the legislature's passage of House Bill fourteen twenty-seven and twenty seventeen. Which mandated P M P data to be analyzed through a coordinated quality improvement focus. The collaborative empowers providers to be good stewards in opioid prescribing by providing quarterly prescribing reports with data. That can be used to reduce opioid prescribing above the prescribing guidelines established in the healthcare authorities opioid clinical policy. The collaborative is relatively young since its inception, but its key success is that. Above guidelines, acute opioid prescribing has reduced over the last four years as we describe in our letter. These meaningful results should be built upon, which is why we support the recommendations to enhance the prescribing reports. However, the success of these recommendations will depend on available resources to fund an expansion. Of the collaborative's work and we encourage the legislature to allocate resources to support the collaborative if you want the work to expand. Uh, but beyond this area of agreement, we have strong disagreements with other recommendations included in the report. Uh, we oppose the recommendation to grant the state auditor access to identifiable P M P information. Uh, we have strong concerns about data privacy protections for patients and providers. We also have strong concerns about the data being handled, analyzed by an entity that lacks the necessary clinical background. Training and education to appropriately analyze the data. We also believe that clinical data evaluation falls outside the auditor's mission. And contradicts the legislature's original intent of establishing a quality improvement process through House Bill fourteen twenty-seven. Uh, as mandated by the P M P law, uh, Wishia and Wisma currently evaluate the data. Through a lens of improving patient safety and quality, uh, through a coordinated improvement program. The professionals who analyze and compile the prescription reports possess the necessary expertise to contextualize the prescription data. They're also aware of the broader trends in addressing prescription drug misuse and overdose prevention. Which allows for peer driven advancements in prescribing practices that balance patient safety and current science. The Auditor's Office indicated that their requested access to P M P data could result in data being shared with licensing boards and commissions for enforcement actions. This would be a major departure from the current arrangement. As the report notes, during so could harm providers' trust in the P M P. And it could also deter prescribers from prescribing opioids and other controlled substances to avoid scrutiny. Uh, as my colleagues from Wisma, uh, highlighted, this could cause a chilling effect for patients and their access to medication. Uh, we also disagree with the recommendation for a D O H led, uh, work group that expands D O H's role in the Better Prescribing, Better Treatment Collaborative. This recommendation really does not add value, nor does it reflect the intent of the program. The recommendation could actually hinder the collaborative successes with peer driven, non-punitive. Clinical improvement work and place in jeopardy the key protections from disclosure that exist under the coordinated quality improvement program. Uh, it could also create the perception among prescribers that punitive or other heavy handed changes could be forthcoming from D O H. Which could also create a similar chilling effect on legitimate prescription. Uh, because of this, we encourage the legislature to maintain the current P M P data use arrangement that supports quality improvement work focused on advancing patient safety. That has delivered meaningful results. Uh, thank you again for the opportunity to share Wish's feedback on the auditor's report. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Um, we have two people who are signed in for, uh, for testimony. Other people submitted written testimony, which was distributed to us already. In the interest of time, I'd like to go to, uh, Rose Bigum, followed by Cindy Hounhouse. For you to each testify for two minutes. We're gonna run, um, approximately eight to ten minutes over. Um, and that it will have to cut off at ten after, so. Uh, is Rose Bigum. Available to testify?
I'm here.
Thank you.
Great. Uh, thank you very much for the opportunity to share some comments with this committee. Uh, I'm Rose Bigum. I'm the Co-Chair of Washington Patients in Intractable Pain and we are here to ask you to vote no on the S A O's recommendation. To amend state law to give them access to identifiable P M P data. The S A O is attempting to use our state P M P as something other than what the legislature intended when they created it. And doing so could harm many Washington residents, in particular those of us with disabling pain conditions and their healthcare providers. Over ten years ago, we were all told over prescribing has caused an overdose crisis and we need to dramatically lower the rate of opioid prescriptions immediately. In order to stop the loss of lives in our state and nationwide. And the lower prescription rates which followed were celebrated as clear victories without any concern about the millions of patients who are now going without those medications. And that's when patients with pain conditions, the overwhelming majority of which had no history of addiction whatsoever, began to needlessly suffer. Guidelines and open prescribing with hard dosage limits followed and many became laws in other states. Washington State passed relatively sane guidance thanks to the prescribing work group at that time in the Washington Medical Commission. We know this because we helped to make sure that the patient voices were heard during that process back in twenty-eighteen. Unfortunately, the S A O, which consulted a long list of organizations during this audit. Many of whom lodged strong objections to their proposals as seen in the audit report. Failed to consult with the largest group impacted by P M P changes or access, people disabled by pain conditions. There's approximately one twenty-five million people in Washington State lived with chronic daily pain. And approximately five hundred thousand living with high impact pain which inter.
Rose, you're, we're losing your voice on.
I can lean in. Is that better?
That's much better.
Okay.
Give that one more minute, please.
Great, sure. Uh, if the S A O had consulted us, we would have told them. This population is already suffering a critical public health crisis. We need under treatment of pain. And these proposed efforts would exacerbate the existing harm to these people already suffering from the chilling effect on op.
We've lost you. Sorry, we lost you again.
Okay.
All right.
Let's have Cindy go then.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your testimony, Cindy.
Hello?
Yes, you're on Cindy.
Hi, yeah, my name is Cindy Hohenhouse and I'm speaking on behalf of patients in Washington with intractable pain. When deciding how to effectively sum up the sentiment of chronic pain patients in our state. I chose the word angry. They're tired of government inserting itself until their private pain care. They are tired of losing their providers to a hostile regulatory environment, both rule and perceived. They are tired of others deciding for them if they can continue to work, if they can care for their families, if they can enjoy the beauty of life or dysfunction at all. Patients are frustrated that opioid misuse and abuse prevention strategies gauge their success by reduced prescribing. To patients, prevention efforts often equal the loss of medically appropriate pain care. This makes patients feel like acceptable collateral. That sentiment is echoed in the fact that the S A O's office did not reach out to any patients, the largest group of stakeholders affected by any use of the P M P. The S A O would now like to reach into our protected medical data to determine if there is another opportunity to further curb opioid misuse and abuse. In other words, to patients, is there another way to further restrict access to medically appropriate pain care? The S A O fails to provide the metrics by which the pain community and their providers will be judged. Concerning patterns and vague terms such as misuse and abuse, leave, leave the doors open for multiple convictions. Patients within the P M P cannot be protected without the firewalls of clinical context, medical record or patient and provider relationship. But they tell us, pain community, don't worry, the S A O will provide an opioid czar and. Opioids are in order to interpret all your non-contextual data and determine if your current pain care is appropriate. And they will do it blindfolded. The S A O will then use this non-contextual data to recommend or not recommend continued surveillance via the new and enhanced use of the P M P. Did I mention patients are angry? Without any consultation with the pain community nor acknowledgement of patient harms mentioned by almost all the stakeholders. The S A O is still asking for unfettered access to our data. We ask on behalf of the intractable pain community and in the interest of patient safety. Do not take any further steps to grant the S A O this access. Thank you.
Thank you Cindy and Rose. Do we have questions for the Auditor's Office or the panelists? Anyone? I'm just going to ask clarifying question. I wasn't certain if to the Auditor's Office. Did you recommend access to? Uh, data. From prescribers and pharmacies that apart from just asking, uh, the data of individual patients.
I can, I can answer that, Chair Pollitt. I don't know if my video is popping up there now. I am, we, uh, we would have wanted to gain access to. Patient, to pharmacy and to prescriber information as far as our analysis that we were hoping to conduct. But I do want to share that we would have used unique identifiers and so that we would not have actually obtained, uh, patient names. So I just do want to make that point of clarification to share that with you. And we would have used unique identifiers for the prescribers and the pharmacies as where, as well. So just to let you know that we were trying to, within our analysis that we were initially proposing to minimize the types of data. That we would need to request and the identifiers within those. So just to share that piece.
Thank you. Senator Short.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate it. Well, Carolyn, that kind of gives me a follow up question based on what I just shared. In, in gaining testimony from the medical community, how? How can you do this type of work without having that kind of clinical background, medical background necessary to interpret the data?
Great question. We, um, we definitely plan to hire a subject matter expert to assist us. With this analysis if we were able to conduct it. Um, and we would use their expertise. Plus, we would also be consulting, um, and sharing information with Department of Health. And, um, if we needed to consult further with the regulatory boards and commissions in any circumstances, we would do that as well. Um, so, um, we did plan to vet that information. And, uh, then talk to, um, Department of Health about anything that we found. Um, as well as working with the subject matter expert to help us interpret that information. And I did want to mention, one of the key things to also consider here is, and Dr. Schlicker brought this up earlier, which is very important. Um, about specialties and doctor specialties and, um, we would have also taken that into consideration as well, recognizing, uh, that, uh. Some prescribers are taking care of patients who are cancer patients, hospice care. Um, so recognizing those unique circumstances with pain management. That taking all that into consideration into any analysis that we performed.
Dr. Schlicker.
Thank you Chair. Just to add, you know, clarity onto the issue, one of the challenges that's been identified by those, uh, in the chronic pain community is that. At the end of the day, it's hard to identify who is a chronic pain patient from P D M P data because that data does not exist in the P D M P. Even looking at specialties is problematic. Uh, for instance, hospice is not a, you know, specific designation, uh, of a provider type. So many hospice providers, those that work in this community are family physicians by training, but they can also be internists. They can also, uh. but they can also be internists. They can also be emergency medicine physicians. They can have a host of backgrounds. And so if you simply look at their NTI designation, they will show up as a family physician. And so then you've now got an outlying physician that in fact is a hospice provider, but is lumped in with the family physicians. And that's the kind of work that we do on an ongoing rolling basis with better prescribing, better treatment, where providers reach out to us and say, hey, I'm not a family physician. I'm in fact hospice. I'm in fact cancer care. I'm in fact X, Y, or Z. And we actually move them over into a new category to give them the accurate data. That's the kind of iterative process that's necessary to actually get good quality data that just can't happen from the PDMP, even with the best of intents.
Thank you for that explanation. I'm a little bit confused. I don't know if others, if you could clarify, if, if you are indeed collecting that, why not ensure that it is part of the initial PMP as part of the improvements here?
So that's data that we collect as our collaborative WSMA and WISHA. It's not part of the PDMP. So we, the difference here being is that the PDMP in and of itself has the information about patients and prescribers names. So Nathan Schlicker is an emergency physician. We as WISHA and WISMA go out to health systems and groups and in Washington have all of the health systems enrolled and get from them a list of their providers who then give us a specialty designation. We merge those two together, you know, take an email address as well and then send out individualized reports and have over 20,000 clinicians enrolled and do that quarterly. On that, they also get an opportunity to respond. It has my name and email address. And every quarter I get, you know, 25 to 100 people writing me back with questions about the program, the data. We walk through that. We do education, but also identifying, hey, I'm not family medicine, even though that's what my NTI says, that's what my health system says. I'm in fact hospice. I'm in fact oncology. I'm in fact something else because they're practicing in a different area than what their, you know, their specialty or residency training was. And in the case of hospice, it has not been a specialty designation. It's been a subspecialty in some boards now, but is not in and of itself something that you go correctly into for training. You have to be trained in an underlying board and that then is identified in most health systems and NPIs.
I need to see if Carly Bartz Overman can respond before we have to end the meeting. Thank you, Dr. Schlicker.
Sorry to cut you off, Dr. Schlicker. I just wanted to speak from the PMP's point of view. We do look at provider specialty. However, providers can have multiple specialties, change specialties, and then not go back and update their NPI. So there's just too many variables and we found that the specialty that we have related to the PMP just can't be counted on. So there's just a lot of complexity around collecting accurate specialty and making sure that that data continues to be accurate as people change positions and take on new specialties.
Thank you. We need to end the meeting at this point. I believe that for discussions about our agenda, I invite people to perhaps schedule a meeting with me and with the executive committee, we can schedule something if members have, would like to have a discussion about the agenda. I hope that we have clarified that the goal of the first agenda item was to respond to a request for information regarding conducting an additional performance audit and whether or not the work already done constituted adequate equivalent to a performance audit to meet that request. I don't believe it does, though I intend to continue those discussions. So with that, we're going to conclude with a note of great appreciation that we will be having a new legislative auditor taking over the reins from Keenan. Eric Thomas, welcome. And we will have full committee meeting in, on January 4th, where those reins will be handed over. That we are adjourned. Thank you.